At North St. Paul Arts and Culture Commission Meeting to Order, September fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. Mai, if you could please take role for us.
Sure thing.
Here.
Here.
Commissioner Matt Blair.
Here.
Commissioner Clark Williams.
Here.
Here.
Commissioner Laura Stryng.
Here.
And Commissioner Li Yang is absent today.
Thank you, Mai. I just want to call to attention, so we are now calling Commissioner Raquel Soto, Commissioner Raquel Soto, and not Student Commissioner, right? So we didn't have to do anything here at the Arts Commission meeting?
Not here, but at the August twentieth meeting, Council appointed her, so she did say go.
Okay.
Let's take off students.
Hooray!
Congratulations, Raquel.
Thank you.
What's next? Mayor? City Council?
Baby steps.
All right. Oh, and then we also have our Council Liaison Lisa Wong and our city staff Mai Zhong. All right, like to adopt the agenda? If everyone has had a chance to take a look at the agenda, if there's anything you would like to change, add, remove, please let me know. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as listed.
So moved.
Moved by Carrie, seconded by Amanda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. We have adopted the agenda successfully. Congratulations, everyone. All right, approval of minutes. Everyone get a chance to take a look at the meeting minutes from August seventh. Any comments, any changes anyone would like to suggest? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as provided.
So moved.
So moved by Carrie.
Seconded.
Second. Okay, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Okay, thank you, Laura and Carrie. Meeting open to the public. So we have someone from the public here today. Come on up. Please introduce yourself.
Thank you, Commissioner. My name is John Baker. Do you need my address too?
I think just the City Council does that.
Okay. I'm just here to, Commissioner Clark Williams asked me to come talk about the North St. Paul Veteran Park.
Yeah.
And so just, I'll just go real briefly. I'm a lawyer. At the time, City Councilor Terry Furlong came to my law office in about 2011, figure out how to build the park. The land, there was originally a park called Cannon Park.
Right.
The, Mendat annexed the land to rebuild Highway thirty-six and then gave the land, the portion of the land back to the city of St. Paul for a veteran park. At that time, I created a nonprofit for the Veteran Park Commission. It's actually called North St. Paul Veteran Park Incorporated. And then I created an agreement, and I'm sure the city attorney still has that. The caveat, I don't know whether that agreement is still in effect. You'd have to check with the city attorney, but I created an agreement, cooperation agreement between this nonprofit and the city of North St. Paul. In essence, this, the nonprofit, and it's a five oh one C three, by the way, North St. Paul Veteran Park is responsible for all the memorials, the flags, the teaching stands, and the pavers. The city owns the park and is responsible for everything else, including the grass, the water, and all of that, and the electrical boxes.
Okay.
So the, 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 the Northern Park Commission continues to maintain, and is part of the agreement, is they maintain the, the memorials themselves. The city does not do that, but the city has everything else. That's just it in a nutshell. Take any questions.
So, you know, the big question for us is if we wanted to add something to that park. And so that's, you know, there's been an idea floated about a Veterans Rock.
Freedom Rock.
Freedom Rock. This is something that's been done at Veterans Parks across country, right? Do we engage with just the North St. Paul Parks and Rec Commission first and then the city in order to do that, or?
Well, in, in, in my opinion, Commissioner, the way this is laid out, the city owns the property, so it's, it would be the Parks and Rec Commission.
Okay.
The, the, so, yes, I would say you need, would need to ingre- engage the Parks and Rec Commission, although I don't think that they have any, anything really to do with it because the nonprofit takes care of everything. So, you know, I guess the question would be then, can the nonprofit say what is done with that property?
Right.
Technically, no, but if you want to play nice, I would say.
Right, so is, is there, who is currently established as the head of the nonprofit?
That I don't know. I think it's, I think it continues to be Dan Fisher.
Oh, okay.
I haven't, I haven't, haven't looked at their, I know they're still a valid nonprofit. I just checked that. They filed their nine ninety with the IRS and everything is legit with it.
So the main difference would probably be that, so, so even though it may fall under the auspices of the North St. Paul Parks and Rec and the city of North St. Paul, there still is this five oh one C three that exists. And so if we wanted to engage with the Veterans Park in any way to try and add some kind of public art display there, we would want to engage with both the five oh one C three organization as well as the city?
That would be my recommendation, Commissioner. And I have heard the Freedom Rock, what they're concerned about is the irrigation that's on the, the current irrigation system that's on the grass.
Sure.
I think that's the, the pushback that they're giving on that right now.
Okay. Anyone else have thoughts or questions?
I'm assuming we would do the same with utility boxes, then?
Again, Commissioner, the utility box is owned by the city. And again, my recommendation is, you know, work with the nonprofit because they have, they put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into that. And it's a, it's a really nice, my opinion is one of the nicer veteran memorials in the area.
Yeah. Is there a utility box there on that side?
Yes.
There is, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, really? Okay. Any other thoughts or questions? All right, well, thanks so much. Appreciate you giving us a little backstory and the history to that. That's really helpful.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Take care. Okay, we have no one else here from the public, so we'll move on. We have no public hearings. Commission Business Action Items and Recommendations, so Arts and Culture Commission Appointment. Oh, did I jump the gun?
That's okay. But now that Council has appointed Raquel, we do have an opening now for a Student Commissioner.
Oh, yeah.
Everyone is welcome to apply if they meet the criteria of being a student and they live in North St. Paul. Hopefully someone, right? Someone will apply soon.
Is there an age limitation on that? I mean?
High school or college now?
Yeah, we've changed it to.
Do you include college?
Yep.
Is that, is there still a link for that, Mai? And could you, I'm sorry, could you forward that out again? I'm sure I have it somewhere, but.
And then we'll have Eva promote that as well.
Oh, thank you, Eva. Yeah, that'd be awesome. I'll see what I consent.
Yeah, it might be nice to also reengage six twenty-two.
Yeah.
As well.
Yeah. Okay, but nothing else we need to do, Mai?
Nope, nothing else.
Raquel is official.
Yay! Vote now.
All right. Wait, do we need, we don't need to vote?
No, she can vote.
She can vote. Oh, okay. All right, so now we're going to turn it over to Ava, I think, right? So twenty twenty-five Events Budget Discussion. This is going to be great.
I know, I can imagine.
Edge of my seat.
Hello, Commission. It's really good to be here with you all. So I'm here because I am in charge of the events budget, presenting it to Council, pushing it through for twenty twenty-five. And Mai and I were talking, and you guys have some really great ideas, and so I wanted to collaborate with you on what we're putting forward to Council. So I have a background in, with that, I will just get into it. So I have a background in community building and a passion for fostering connections as well as the arts. And I believe that arts events are a great way to build connections, and so I'm really excited about the things that you guys have been doing, and I'm excited to collaborate. So this meeting, I'm hopeful that we can kind of, it's not just going to be me presenting, it's going to be kind of a back and forth. I have something to write with so that we can kind of have some ideas going.
Good, good.
So I wanted to kind of go through my vision for what city events are. So for me, it's connection, community, and excitement. So events that everyone can enjoy and participate in, events that foster a sense of community, more connections between residents, group activities that foster collective city pride, and set the city apart, and events that are really exciting and that people ask for again and again. So with that in mind, let's talk about the events budget for next year. I have your ideas, so I'm just going to kind of work through them.
Okay.
So, the first one is the Autumn Arts Festival. It's art, it's local business, it's fun and exciting, it's a celebration of culture, and it's great for everyone. I'm super excited about this year's, and I'm excited to keep making it better and better. This is obviously my first year working here, and so I'm really excited to, you know, get these first couple events out of the way, get my feet underneath me, and just make it better from here. So I'm totally happy to keep that on the budget. The other one is the Guided Art Nights. I love art and fostering art is super important for the community. I want these art nights to have a bigger draw for people, you know, more signups and more excitement, possibility of increasing the class size with different art forms. I think that capping it at fifteen people for the amount of money it is, is sad. I feel like we should have, you know, more people being able to join, which I know that art nights are, or paint nights specifically have kind of a limit. So, you know, broadening the scope and having different kinds of art nights that allow for more class size essentially, I think would be a great way to do it. So you had six classes this year, and you want to increase it to eight to nine. One of them unfortunately had to get canceled because we didn't have the participation. My proposal is that we stick with six, kind of figure out what works, what doesn't, and then go from there. I'm willing to work with you guys on that. If we have a lot of really good ideas, or you guys have, you know, friends who want to come in and teach, I'm happy to hear those ideas. So with that, yeah, these are some of my ideas. So we were talking about, you know, Sweetha with her Mandela art is really popular, so maybe having, you know, two Mandela art, one watercolor art, and then having a yarn class, having more people attend that, and then a new idea and a new idea to make the six. And so some of the new ideas that I heard were cookie decorating, maybe attaching it to an upcoming holiday. My suggestions were pottery painting, improv comedy workshop, dance workshop, you know, we're having the people for the Autumn Arts Festival, maybe asking them to come in, creative writing class, poetry class, that sort of thing. So I want to hear your ideas. Obviously, we can talk about this later. The main thing for the Guided Art Nights is the number. And then we can decide, you guys can decide later what you want to put forward. I don't know how these meetings work. I don't know if you guys want to.
Just all talk a lot.
Okay, great.
I just want to.
Yeah.
Okay. We're all over the place. So I take, I took the lead on the Guided Paint Nights when Lisa Ritchie left. And she was the person, she was actually our volunteer artist who was leading those, and she set the class limit. She felt that the fifteen was the limit that she could handle.
Okay.
So I am happy to have as many people sign up as want to sign up, as long as our guest artist or whoever it is that's coming in to do the class is comfortable with them. You know, I don't want anyone to feel overwhelmed. I think that would be a disservice. And then your ideas are great. I actually sent Mai a spreadsheet of some additional, like succulent night or making bouquets, and I had web links for everything for who to contact. So got a lot of ideas for next year. So I'm sad to hear you want to bring it back down to six, but I get it. So we can, we can start with that.
Six, okay.
My only suggestion with increasing the size of the class is we want the people who attend to get their money's worth out of it.
For sure.
And as an artist myself, I can say that it would be difficult to have a class of too many.
Yeah.
You know, I could see, depending upon the length of the class, twenty maybe? But I think people want to feel like I learned something, not just I copied step by step like a paint by number. They want to feel their creativity going in and get feedback because that's going to be their only opportunity to get feedback from that artist.
Yeah, and you don't want to be constantly asking, oh, what are we supposed to do? You know?
Yeah, asking your neighbor that. So I do agree, but I, I just want to be careful with that.
Yeah, for sure.
We possibly look at longer evenings with the double class. So have one class start at five PM and then another class start at six PM, but the same artist the whole night, then we can get more people in. Maybe one of them is geared towards more advanced. Just some thoughts.
Like it's painting, you know?
Yeah, like the beginners, the first.
We've also had a couple of people repeatedly come in late, and I, I don't want to, I'm with you. I want to make it as open and available and welcoming as possible. But we've got eighteen people or whoever waiting on three people before we start the class. I just don't think that's fair. So I don't know if.
We should still start the class. It's kind of their loss if they're not there.
If they're that late, yeah.
And Ava, did you have a goal number of attendees in mind?
I was just released out that we canceled. I think that the minimum number was three? Question mark? I'm not sure. So I just, you know, the more the merrier, but obviously without canceling the class because we obviously had to pay, still had to pay a deposit, so.
And what was the max currently set at?
Fifteen.
Do you have the numbers, the participation numbers of the different events that occurred?
We, we could pull that information up, but the last one that we had was ten, and then another person surprised us, so eleven people.
I think it was fourteen because those three did show up.
No, ten signed up.
Oh, got it, got it. Okay.
Eleven total.
Got it, sorry.
But Sweetha's class, all of them have been at full capacity.
Yep.
Yeah.
We had to add a second one for the one that got sold out.
Two times.
Yeah.
Yeah. So she was really popular.
Yep. And I, I don't know if it's just the mandala or, I don't know. I don't know what the difference is.
Maybe she's promoting herself more so.
Oh, could be.
Could be.
That could be it, too.
Right around social media.
Yeah.
Okay, amazing. So I will leave it at six for now, and then we can discuss longer, you know, different types of classes and that sort of thing. And you guys can obviously decide what happens there.
Do you feel like that's something where next year, if it's in the budget, we can always add? Like if we get halfway through the year and there's room in the budget and room in the schedule, we can find something?
I'm not sure exactly. When I came in, the budget, some of the items that I was given, I was like, we didn't pay for anything in this, but it's given money. So I had some more things to work with, whereas this year I'm hoping to be more on top of it and, you know, really use the budget to its full potential.
And I think this is a line item within our budget. So does that mean you're taking this over, right?
Yeah, it's just going to take that.
The paint nights were, because Lisa wanted to buy all those canvases and stuff for when she was leading it.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is specific to, you know, you guys have your arts and culture budget, but your events, like Arts, Autumn Arts Festival, fall under the events budgets. That would be under that.
But this isn't an event. In twenty twenty-four, the paint nights were under the Autumn Arts Festival budget. Oh, I'm sorry, the Arts and Culture Commission.
Well, there was a certain portion that got allocated from her budget.
Oh.
For us to use.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Really?
Mm-hmm. But technically, everything is under her budget.
Got it.
So, yeah, we did have that. So for, for twenty twenty-four, our current year, I had that listed as paint and SIP, twenty-five hundred dollars, and that was under the events budget in twenty twenty-four. So twenty twenty-five, it's still under the events budget, just art classes and events.
Got it. Okay, so I'm going to move on to the next idea. This idea was your proposed new idea. It's the Asian Night Market. Oh, yeah.
Can I ask a question about the first one you lived on? So when you're suggesting that we stick with the six, are you suggesting that we stick with the twenty-five hundred dollars that we had budgeted for twenty twenty-four to also have to use in twenty twenty-five, or less money because we haven't used all that money?
I'm saying that we just roll over what we had for the previous budget.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Good question. Thank you. Yeah, so the Asian Night Market idea. What I like about this idea is that it's really successful in St. Paul. Summer nights are fun and people will drive from out of the city to attend. However, I am looking at this meeting and also this budget as what I, as a reflection of what I can realistically do, as long, as well as Mai and Sarah. When I present it to Council, I want to be able to really put my foot behind it and be like, I can do everything that's on this list, and really hit it at the park. And so I see some challenges with the Asian Night Market idea that I want to bring to you. So the first challenge I see is that there is competition. So St. Paul and Maplewood both have their own Asian Night Markets.
Oh, they do.
Yes. And I was at the St. Paul, the St. Paul Asian Night Market, which was huge and completely out of control. We had, they had parked, like people parking in three so that the middle person was totally blocked in.
Oh, wow.
It was pretty chaotic. It was obviously super well attended, but it was just kind of blown out of proportion. So we would be competing around the same time that they're doing their things. Our similar event previously was canceled because of poor attendance, the food truck night. Also, the car show is the very next night. If this was on a Thursday, the car show's on the next day. So, you know, the option to get food truck food is happening every week in the summer.
Is there a date, a potential date for this?
No, but it would, as a, as a food truck night, it would have to be during the summer months.
But did we, was, you mentioned a Thursday. Did we mention that this would be a Thursday? Or was that something that C recommended?
We usually don't have events in the summer on Fridays because of the car show. And then previously, you know, events earlier in the week, not as well attended. I'm assuming Thursday.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but obviously that would be up to you guys. Also, you know, I was the person trying to get food trucks for the Autumn Arts Festival this year. It was a really, really hard push.
Really?
It was, yeah. I was working on it for a really long time, and we had two drop out last minute, and then it was a scramble to get the one again. So I foresee a potential, you know, hardship coming forward, especially if we're trying to get specific, you know, Asian-specific food trucks.
Hey, do you have an idea why?
So I, I was continuously kind of asking. I think partly because there's a lot going on. A lot of them were already booked out.
Oh.
And just didn't have responses back. So, yeah.
Can I also chime in on two? A lot of the responses that I get is because, you know, if it's a smaller city or a smaller event, then they'd rather choose to go to a bigger event.
Right.
That makes sense. Can't blame them for that.
Okay, the next challenge I see is that no city parking lot is large enough to host this. I know that it was presented that, you know, to borrow land from somebody else to rent the space essentially. But I was talking, and I know that Polar Plaza wasn't mentioned, but I know that when we've tried to rent or talked to the owner of Polar Plaza in the past, we haven't had a good relationship with the people that own those sorts of spaces. So it could be a potential challenge if we're trying to rent space for this.
I'm sorry, what's Polar Plaza?
The one, the where the, like, strip mall is.
Asian market is in Salt Lake.
Yeah.
On the level.
Eva.
Yeah.
Got it. McKnight, McKnight.
Yeah. I'm just saying that, you know, they are challenging people to work with, is what I'm saying.
Assuming that it would draw people into those establishments, though, and bring them more money, I mean, wouldn't they be open to something like that?
Potentially. I mean, we haven't asked.
I think C has asked the Mahar grocery store owner, and he seemed interested. So, but he is, I don't think he owns the whole.
Yeah, he's one strip mall. He is a tenant. So that would be a caveat there, or something to work through.
For sure. The next one is that even if it was successful, I saw it in the St. Paul one, there wasn't enough parking, and it was a challenge. So, you know, parking is also an issue. My own thought is that challenges with fostering connection, you know, I think that this event is really fun. You go with a small group, you're there for a little bit, and then you leave. But I think that we could plan an event where people maybe stay and interact longer. I think that's the draw of the Autumn Arts Festival. It's a longer day, lots of different things, multiple age groups can enjoy it, and it's a draw for everyone to kind of stay and maybe have those connections and chat and meet new people. Whereas the Asian Night Market, I don't see people interacting as much, but you could argue against that. The next one is the biggest one, the staff bandwidth. So the Asian Night Market would have to be in the summer months, kind of a May to August kind of thing, which is our busiest event season. After doing the summer, I don't think I personally have the space and the schedule nor the capacity to really pull off another large event. Especially, I've been told that next summer we're doing a bunch of roadwork, and I'm going to have that also constraining my time. So going forward, I'm going to present two ideas in lieu of this event, and those ideas are not in the summer. The next one is, it was challenging to get, you know, all the hands on deck for some of the other events, whether, you know, Parks Commission and like the Autumn Arts Festival. I think that, you know, we can do a lot, but we also need a lot of help to pull off these bigger events. So it really have to be like a push from this, this commission, but also the Parks Commission, other commissions as well. We currently only have like one or two volunteers signed up for the Autumn Arts Festival, and it's going to be a busy day. So that's the kind of where I see it, it sitting. And then, yeah, all this to say, I really want to do events with you. This event, however, I immediately was like, there's a lot against us, and I want to present ideas that. This event, however, I immediately was like, there's a lot against us and I wanna present, uh, ideas that I feel confident we can really pull off. So I'd like to hear your feedback, thoughts on these challenges, yeah.
I, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah.
I feel like I can come up against everything except for the staff bandwidth part.
Okay.
And I totally understand that, and I completely understand that our staff is stretched very thin.
Yeah.
And I don't have a solution for that. I feel like competitions, I wanna say so what, we have an Autumn Arts Festival, there's arts festivals everywhere.
Yeah.
So I don't feel like that's really an issue, it depends on the time of year and as long as we don't schedule at the same time. Um, I work with a group of sisters, this is why I was asking, um, Vong, Wang and Yua, they are among sisters who are also artists who I see at art festivals very frequently. They have run an artist Asian Night Market. Um, and I think my idea for the one that we are gonna run wasn't just food trucks.
Okay.
It was gonna be kind of like an arts festival where there's also artists and performers or something.
Yeah.
Um, so again, kind of different and still has that community collaboration part that you were looking for. I can't help with the staff bandwidth and I completely understand, I would propose, I mean, you said you're gonna propose a couple options. Um, maybe we could look at starting to plan it in twenty twenty five, but actually have an event in twenty twenty six, which would possibly help with the staff bandwidth. Oh, look at that, I did fix it.
What?
Nothing. Um, I don't ask that the three of you do everything for these events and would never ask that. Um, we can do a lot up here.
Yeah. Amazing, thank you.
I certainly don't wanna give up on it either, um, I think that, um, just like Amanda was mentioning, that there's workarounds to all your challenges, you put a lot of work into it and I really appreciate that. Um, but maybe looking at a different time of year, I know summer is gorgeous, but it doesn't have to be summer, can it be late spring? Um, it doesn't have to be that strip mall, can we choose Casey Lake Park and do a tent artist Asian Market night? Um, instead, I mean, if parking is really a problem, it doesn't seem to be enough to keep people away from the Autumn Arts Festival. And, um, it's a night for a community that bands together no matter what and shows up for each other. So I think that if we planned it, people would come.
Okay.
So.
I just had one comment, uh, earlier on, there was concern that it was, the name was not inclusive, but I think that Asian Night Markets have been around enough in Minnesota that it's kind of like the Irish Festival.
Yeah.
That anybody who wants to, who wants in on it, will get in on it. And I don't think people feel limited by the name.
Yeah.
I, I think that's a over concern.
I, I agree with you.
I, I'm excited to hear your alternatives.
Yeah, any other thoughts on any of these points?
The only thing I could, uh, maybe suggest is that, like, if, like, you're suggesting, Amanda, if we, you know, do more planning next year for, and think towards twenty twenty six, what if there were some part of the Autumn Arts Festival that included some kind of, uh, Asian, you know, area or segment or that, you know, so we could bring in Asian performances? Um, and then, you know, like C had in her email, uh, vendor opportunities there that maybe, maybe we start to get some of that buzz going through the Autumn Arts Festival. So I think, you know, the Autumn Arts Festival is so young still, really, I mean, this is, we've really done it for, what, two years?
So are you saying possibly include some of the aspects of an Asian Night Market into next year's Autumn Arts Festival? But then possibly still plan an Asian Night Market for twenty twenty six?
For twenty twenty six, yeah.
So kind of like a preview, dip our toes.
Well, yeah, and start to make some of those connections with people and, you know, you, maybe you start to build some awareness for twenty twenty six or something like that.
I did mean to say with the sisters that I was speaking about, one of them works for Spring Board for the Arts. And she actually, I was talking to her and, and she knows I'm on this commission, and she mentioned that they would love to work with us on anything, so Spring Board for the Arts is also a resource for us.
Okay.
That's great.
Yeah, in fact, I could probably get her to come and speak to like how they can help us with anything.
Okay. Like in.
Not, not just the Asian Night Market, but anything.
But like building awareness and things like that?
Yeah, and they, they run a lot of classes, um, they're working on a bunch of, they're working on a new program that she was telling me about, but they also do, uh, Work of Art, I think is the name of the program. Um, I took some of those classes, it's about the business side of being an artist and
Mm-hmm.
how to kind of run that side of the world.
Sure.
Yeah. That's going on to a different topic.
So, yeah, and what, cause the one thing I, um, I would just, uh, wanna bring up with the Autumn Arts Festival, and so the Asian Night Market, I mean, I don't, I don't know enough about that other than what I've read that, that C has sent out. Um, and I was not aware that there were these others that were going on, but, um, you know, maybe if we were to, to try and build some of that into the Autumn Arts Festival, I, I, I love the idea of continuing to grow the Autumn Arts Festival, like, okay, we've been, we've done this a couple of years, you know, last year was really successful, the year before that it snowed, um, but, but it was, it was still fine, but, you know, I feel like it's got some momentum and, and could grow. Um, and that's where I say, you know, can, maybe we, if we can continue to try and establish that as, uh, one of the key North St. Paul events. Um, and then start to, you know, slowly kind of build some momentum for Asian Night Market. Um, that way, cause I think that, uh, and that's why, you know, we had asked for an increased budget for the Autumn Arts Festival, not because of the Asian Night Market, but just because would allow us more resources to do, you know, I, I think Mai had maybe reached out to you, Ava, about, um, tents or something like that, and, you know, Amanda and I were looking through this budget earlier in the year and it's like, the, the, you know, the person who was previously working on staff to work through this stuff, the, the budget was kind of gone by the time we had a, a look at it. And, and so it was like, well, we would love to have like some kind of big tent staked out, out there, like, uh, you know, the St. Peters does that where they have huge tents out there and just, you know, in case of rain and things like that. But we just couldn't even afford that at that point, cause the budget was, was gone.
We are adding a tent this year for our attendees who will be watching performers.
Oh, great, and what kind of tent is that?
It's like a canopy, um, I think it'll, it's a twenty by thirty.
Oh, great, excellent.
I, um, suggested that because at this meeting.
Yeah.
Talked about, and so I'm like, oh, well, if we have the extra budget, let's put this in.
Did we have enough budget for that size tent?
Yeah.
How did we not have the budget?
We didn't have Ava.
We didn't have, that's it, yeah, I guess so.
She put a lot of great work into this festival.
Good.
Very excited about it.
Yeah, great, so, and y- you know, I would just love to see that particular event, you know, if we, if we can kind of really lock that thing in and just continue to grow and just build the momentum and the awareness of that, that it's over and over. You know, we had really great feedback from all the artist vendors that were there last year. Um, so I think a lot of them are coming back this year, do you know?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, um, so, you know, like you say, we get competition, I mean, we're a small town, so we get competition from bigger towns that are doing bigger events. And, you know, maybe we get to the point where this is a bigger event, you know, this is one that people wanna, um, that, you know, food trucks wanna be at.
Yeah, I liked, I liked the comment about having it maybe earlier, like, um, yeah, I would be hesitant to do it in April, but May or early June, um, I think that that is a viable option, so. Knowing this, um, if you have any other thoughts, I'll present my two ideas and then we can kind of talk about which one we wanna land on, um, knowing that the summer, probably not a good time. So, um, my first, uh, suggestion, proposed idea, is, um, kind of following your theme, is a, um, multicultural Festival of Nations kind of idea, um, thinking more indoor vendors, um, not food trucks, maybe restaurants kind of coming in, doing more catering-style food. Um, you know, encouraging ethnic dress and performers and ethnic, uh, like, flags and decorations, um, an art section with a craft. Um, possibly having someone, you know, come in and teach something that has some sort of cultural background. Um, I, we'd have to hold it in a gym, I'd have to look into that, I haven't tried renting, you know, the gym at high school or the other gyms around here, um, but.
Hey, what if we had a community center where?
Yes, um, yes, um, so, yeah, um, that's my one idea, kind of, kind of flowing with your, um, cultural night. Um, and I'm thinking either October or November, um, cause that feels appropriate, or even in the spring. Um, I put in, you know, February, March, April, October, November, so.
That'd be nice in the, I just wanna say, in the spring, because it would be a kind of a kickoff to the festival season in Minnesota. And so it would be an early one before all of the really big ones, but parents are ready to get out of the house with their kids on the weekend.
I'd love to be able to do something indoors in a different time of year.
Yes.
We're not cramming everything into, cause even the Autumn Arts, I mean, the, the first one we had, it wasn't even called the Autumn Arts Festival, was it? It was the.
Fall frolic.
Fall frolic, hated that name. It was the Fall Frolic and it was like the first weekend in October, wasn't it?
I wasn't here.
And it's, but it snowed the night before, you weren't there?
No, I came in after that.
Snowed the night before, so that's why we had to move it up a couple of weeks. But jeez, it'd be nice to not have to worry about, you know, snow or tornadoes and, or rain even.
I just worry, I, with Festival of Nations, I would prefer to keep it kind of focused on not all nations.
Yeah.
Um, because as you say, we're like, we're a small city and Festival of Nations feels like a really big event to me.
Okay.
And I don't know if we're there yet.
Got it.
You know, we used to do, uh, Taste of Six-Two-Two for the Six-Two-Two Education Foundation, we had all restaurants within our Six-Two-Two School District come and share their food, so that's a bigger area, of course, but it'd be cool to just have like the new bakery and Macs and just everybody come all in one spot and just share what they have to offer. I think the Festival of North St. Paul could be cool.
Oh, that's kind of cool.
I'm thinking of that Ethiopian food now.
Yeah, right?
Yeah, I do kind of like the Festival of Nations idea though, myself, I mean, cause like, then you could, for example, have the Ethiopian restaurant, you know, so something like that. I don't know.
Yeah.
Something to discuss.
Again, yeah, it's, and then it's like, well, what and where and when?
Could we get your slide on this one so I can read what you wrote?
Uh, that's the man in the booth.
What is his name?
Man in the.
Thanks.
Um.
Yeah.
My only concern is getting enough diversity in the Festival of Nations.
Mm-hmm.
Cause of course, we've talked about having a large Asian presence and, so I don't know, and then it's the whole, like, picking and choosing, since, because where would we host this?
Mm-hmm.
And based off of the size of our area, you know, where, do we say, you know, are we gonna get enough people and, I don't know.
Yeah.
Oh, I think that, I think the whole point is that it, we're gonna, it's a thought to move indoors, it doesn't have to be Festival of Nations.
Yeah.
But it, it's, um, it's kind of a festival of whatever ethnicity wants to come and be a part of it.
Right.
And so I think just getting the concept and construct, location and concept together, then I think we can, I don't think we're gonna be beating down the doors, people are gonna be beating down the doors that we're gonna have to say, nope, we already got three Ethiopian restaurants, it's, no. I, I, I think that we, I, I, I thi, I think that there's space for anybody who wants to be a part of it, I really, really do.
I like that.
And, um.
Heritage Fest.
And, uh, it, it will grow, and then we don't worry about that, and that'll be a beautiful problem to have.
Yay.
Yeah, I agree, the Festival of Nations does kind of sound like you're putting on the Olympics or something, like, and it, it also raises expectations, probably.
Well, yeah.
I believe St. Paul used to have.
Yeah, at the Civic Center, and that was huge.
Really?
Out of control.
Yeah.
They don't do it anymore, correct?
Yeah.
They stopped that, I think, COVID times?
Yeah, I think that's about when it stopped, but I used to go when I was a kid and it was definitely a good mix of ethnicities and it was insane.
It was, and that was called the Festival of Nations?
Yes.
Huh. So, yeah, I mean, like, well, like Heritage Fest is a term that is kind of like, it's just whoever's heritage you're talking about. I think that from, uh, what, New Ulm has heritage, no, is that what it's, Heritage Fest, yeah, I think, but it's, but it's all German.
Yeah, I would think so.
But, but, you know, Heritage Fest can be whatever you, whatever, anything.
I like the concept very much.
Yeah.
And I, I can see, uh, to me, the thought is, okay, great, let's get it started and we'll worry about the problems later when we actually have a, a lot of people who want to be a part of it.
Yeah, so this is kind of more of like a throwing this out there, proposing, you know, um, possible other ideas to, you know, push the events outside of the summer months. Um, so my next idea is a European Holiday Market, um, which would be like early December at Casey Lake, so like small food vendors, photo booth, craft vendors, small community craft, Santa photos, like, possibly like a bonfire, kind of like the Fire and Ice Event, um, and like tree lighting or something like that. Um, you know, it, we're done with the parade and Autumn Arts Festival and everything to do with that, so I feel like we'd have the bandwidth to do something early December. Um, and it would be a smaller event, but also, you know, spread out that as well. So, those are the, the three proposed ideas, so we have the Asian Night Market, um, the Festival of Nations and the European Holiday Night Market, obviously, these are not an extensive list of what we could do. Um, I think now that I'm hearing your ideas, um, possibly proposing to the council a, you know, another arts and culture-led event that is within, you know, January to May, uh, or like.
Right.
Outside of summer.
Yeah, October to December.
I wouldn't go October to December unless it's a holiday-specific event.
Yeah.
And which gives us a lot of competition there.
Yeah.
Competition is a concern.
For sure.
Um.
I think St. Paul does one at Union Depot.
They do, yeah.
The European, it's a big one.
European, okay.
It was very popular last year and they put a lot of work into it and they, um, have grown years and years. Um, and very much focused on the European aspect of it with the food and a lot of the craft vendors as well.
And what's the name of that one?
European Christmas Market.
Oh, and it's at the Union Station?
It's at Union Depot.
Cool.
It's on the roof there? It's really nice.
Oh, cool, huh.
So could we, put it as a placeholder, like you said, just at a different time of year?
Yeah, I think, I think that's a way for us to think.
Yeah.
Would that one kind of mimic then the one that happens in downtown St. Paul, like, an outdoorsy feel? You know, have vendors set up tents outdoors and maybe we would rent like heater, those heater towers, I don't know.
Yeah, I was thinking maybe less vendor-specific, just cause I'd be worried about, yeah, the cold, um, so, and I know that the one in Minneapolis has those like, you know, structures, and so they can kind of keep those vendors warm, but, um, I don't foresee us being able to do that, so I, my thought was having the craft vendors inside, having kind of everything else outside. Um, so it wouldn't be that large, um, yeah.
We tend to keep ourselves warm. As a vendor.
Yeah.
Then Holidazzle and this European Christmas Market, uh, you bring heaters and lots of layers. So they're not providing heat for a bunch of people.
Okay.
But they are providing like the structure, so.
Yeah.
Uh, like Holidazzle just does tents, like the same tents we get, but with walls and everything.
Yeah.
Uh, the European Christmas Market has those built huts.
Yeah.
Those are a lot better, um, cause it's wood that keeps out the wind and everything too, but yeah. Providing heaters for everybody would be a lot, but providing heaters for attendees would be important, just a few scattered ones, yeah.
Yeah, so.
If that is what we do.
Yeah, um, so obviously you guys can talk about this, um, I, I'm excited to hear your ideas. I will present to the council a placeholder, um, and we'll work with Mai on, I don't have numbers off the top of my head on what I'm gonna be proposing, but we can talk about it, um, offline. Does that sound okay?
Love it.
Okay, great, um, so, um, what I'm hearing is that, you know, the January to May is the preferred time. Okay, sounds good.
I have an itch for winter activity.
Yeah.
I actually was excited about that, I might be the only one who wants to do a winter.
I actually was excited about that. I might be the only one who wants to do a winter festival.
We got a winter theme going in our city, so, I always thought we were gonna roll with it.
Well, if you can get two extra out of them, then.
Snowman building competition.
Yeah.
Oh, like the olden days.
You know, it's, it's, I'm sure it's a lot of work and everything, but man, you think of Casey Park, how it was when we were kids, I mean, all it had was that crummy warming house. That place was packed all the time, cause you had the pleasure rink, the hockey rink, and everybody sledding on the hills at Casey Park.
And not a phone or screen?
And I know, right, and, but imagine, you know, now by having the building, if you had something going on, and, like, a daytime event, and you had, like, I don't know, sledding contests, or, you know, some kinda, do they still, do they still do those rinks at Casey?
So we are planning to do a Fire and Ice Event in January.
Oh, okay.
Um, and so that's like, you know, bonfire and skating, obviously weather-dependent, um, I've proposed that we do, you know, hot chocolate and marshmallows and all that jazz, um, so it's something that you obviously can get in on, and if you have ideas on how to add to that event.
Yeah, and maybe that's something to think about, is instead of, you know, you know, let's join forces and, and make fewer bigger events.
Yeah.
Rather than a lot of scattered events, um.
I would like to point out, though, that we started with an Asian Night Market and going into a solo, solely winter.
I think this is another venture. In addition. This was an expansion of ideas. I didn't, I didn't think the Night Market was off the table. I thought these were additional.
That, and that's just what I wanted to point out, like, I don't, I don't want the, I don't wanna expand on a winter event that doesn't focus on a particular nation or anything, in place of an Asian Night Market.
Sure.
And then Tom, um, did you get a chance to read through C's email and?
Mm-hmm.
Um, bring up some of the points that she made she'd like to have Ava know about?
Oh, yeah, did, does Ava not seen that?
Does Ava watch Eva? Oh. Cause, cause I had mentioned that we could talk about it here, maybe you could read off.
Okay.
That mention.
Yeah, do you want me to just read through her email?
Yes.
Okay, so what, uh, C had sent was basically a proposal for the McKnight Asian Market, um, celebrating Asian culture through food and festivities. So the McKnight Asian Market is an exciting event dedicated to celebrating the rich and diverse cultures of Asia through food performances and interactive activities. This vibrant market will bring together food trucks, vendors, and performers to create a unique experience for visitors, allowing them to explore the flavors, sounds, and traditions of Asian cultures. We invite businesses, food vendors, and performers to participate in this community-wide event and contribute to an immersive cultural experience, so, again, sounds not unlike what the others have been, Asian Night Markets. I, I think, and I think, so what she's doing here, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but what she does is outline, you know, uh, the event elements, so food trucks and vendors, um, so, you know, the, the food side of it, the McKnight Asian Market will feature a variety of food trucks and vendors offering authentic Asian cu- uh, cuisine, and then vendor opportunities, so in, in addition to food trucks, we welcome businesses selling Asian-related products such as crafts, clothing, and specialty items, um, and then a performance stage, uh, so live entertainment, um, a small performance stage will be set up at the market featuring traditional and contemporary performances that highlight the richness of Asian cultures, and, uh, call for performers, we would invite, uh, local artists, musicians, and performers to apply for a spot on our stage. So then cultural activities and workshops, so interactive experiences and workshop hosts, um, and then she talks about vendor and performer compensation, uh, supporting our participants, we understand the importance of, uh, fair compensation. So this is interesting, though, food vendors and performers will receive compensation based on a percentage of their sales or through a predetermined fee. Or wouldn't they just get, wouldn't they just make whatever they sell? That, we can, that'd be talked about separately.
If the city puts it on, it would just be the fee schedule that council approves.
The fee schedule for the food?
For the vendors, they, they pay like a permit or a vendor license.
Right, but it's, but, but they wouldn't, but we don't, we don't compensate the food vendors.
Okay, I see, yeah.
Yeah, she had it listed as a compensation to them based on a percentage of their sales or something, so she maybe had something different in mind there. And then she had a segment on media and marketing, event logistics, um, so I think, you know, so C has very detailed, a lot of information here, um, but I think what, uh, the, the challenges that we just talked about, you know, like, well, when and where specifically still exist. Um, she also said, but she ends this with saying, we can also do smaller scale as a test, and only select some things to, to do so that we're not overwhelming ourselves either, which is, uh, fair comment, but, and I just, you, you know, so she's got a lot here. I, I think that the big thing is then, so, so where would we do this, and, um, you know, even if we did something smaller, where would we do that? And, you know, and, and maybe Casey is the place. I know she had talked about doing it at, um, one of the places off of McKnight, but, um, then you get into, I, and I don't know, I know we talked with, um, our, uh, city attorney in the past about, you know, public-private relationships and how some of that stuff will work, and if we're doing a city-hosted event that's on private property, and what liabilities come into play with all that and everything, but, um, uh, I, so I would just throw out one other question here, too, is to, and, and, you know, I don't know, Mike, could you just send the, C's email around to everyone on the commission as well as Ava, so she can look through that, and, and everyone can take a look at what she's got here. Um, but, so I think, you know, she, she did a lot to, to break this down, which I appreciate, um, we just still have those same big questions, when and where, um.
I had a conversation with Cypher Side Dance School, and they're in the McKnight Plaza, um, and they're interested in performing, um, or being a part of it, they, they mentioned, um, and, I mean, they perform all the time, I think they're at the fair several times, um, just this past week, and, um, they perform for the Timberwolves.
Wow.
I mean, they're, they're really, um, and they're a breakdancing school, too, so after the Olympics, I think they've had a lot of interest, um, but they, they said that they were interested, um, in a night market, and, um, I believe, uh, maybe a relative, uh, owns that, uh, plaza, so there may be some connections.
So forgive my ignorance, but Asian Night Market, so presumably, that means you do it at night. It, does it have to be at night? I mean, I mean, like, the Autumn Arts Festival is the middle of the day.
Why not have it at night? And what, what do you qualify as night?
Well, you, you know, the evening, I would think, like, evening hours from anywhere from like, five to ten or something like that, versus?
Yeah, I think the St. Paul one started at five. It was like a dusk, at least I, when I went.
I think it's like an after-work kinda thing to do.
Okay.
For the typical working day.
Yeah, so I just, I just didn't know if, if, you know, it did a, a daytime thing, if that would make any logistics easier, you know, like, if you had, if you're outside, for example.
I think starting it earlier would definitely help.
But I don't know if the.
All things we can consider.
Yeah, being a night thing is critical, but, um, yeah, so let's just, so let's, let me try and summarize here. So I think what we're, what we're talking about is, you know, let's keep thinking about how we can do something in, in the Asian Night Market vein in 2025, whether it's a part of the Autumn Arts Festival, or we, or we start to experiment with something small, um, and then really spend 2025 thinking, uh, doing more planning towards 2026 for an Asian Night Market.
One thing we can look at as far as layout with the Autumn Arts Fest is this year, when you're there, there's a large space behind, I wanna say behind the vendors, but, uh, if you're, so if you're at the playground.
Yeah.
Then there's the vendors, it's the other side. My concern is how hilly it is, but if we have space over there that can be used for other activities, if you see potential in setting something up there.
Yeah.
There's definitely opportunity.
Yeah, absolutely, and I'll be sending out, um, like, a feedback survey after this Autumn Arts Festival, and you guys can, you know, if you have doubts while you're there, love to hear them, um, what went well, what didn't, so, um, I'm sure that we'll have, you know, multiple follow-up and planning sessions after that. Um, but for the, the budget, um, I will just put in, uh, one larger, um, placeholder for the arts and culture event. Amazing.
The Arts Festival, you mean?
No, for a separate.
Oh, just for a separate thing, okay.
Yeah, so the three line items will be the.
Okay.
Autumn Arts Festival, the Guided Art Nights, and the placeholder.
And the placeholder, okay, great.
Amazing. That's all I have. Um, I have one last idea, kind of different than these ones, I kinda wanted to keep it in the vein of, um, markets, but I personally love to dance, um, this is just, you know, making you guys aware of Fire and Ice, um, but, um, a vintage swing dancing night, there is, um, a huge swing dancing culture in Minneapolis that I would love to tap into, um, you know, dressing up, making it more of an, like, a cultural thing, like a back-to-the-forties, um, you would come, learn swing dancing for thirty minutes, and then have kind of an open floor night, um, I have looked into booking the, um, high school gym, it's pretty inexpensive, um, I obviously haven't contacted anyone yet, um, but that's something that I'm also kind of having in the back of my head, whether that's 2025 or 2026, is kind of still up in the air.
I love that.
Yeah, something to kinda keep on your radar.
Yeah, great.
Yeah.
Well, thanks for all your work, Ava, I appreciate it.
I don't know.
She's a vocal band.
Oh, very cool. Yeah, even better if it would be, if it's a, you know, live band.
Yeah, that'd be cool.
That'd be great, yeah. That's all from me, um, if you guys have any more questions or, um, ideas, I'm always willing to chat, and, um, I'm very excited about running events with you.
Great, thanks so much, appreciate all your work, Ava.
Thank you for all your work.
And thanks for your hard work for this year, too.
Yes.
What are you throwing into?
Yep.
Very much.
Um, Fall Roundup Parade, Ma, you wanna take us through that one?
I was gonna ask Ava.
Oh. Before, before you leave.
Before you leave.
We're gonna have two spots, one for commissioners and one for council, um, everyone's welcome to come, encouraged to come, um, yeah, we're gonna have, uh, the two decorated pickup trucks, um, with a sign on it that says, you know, now St. Paul Commission's on it, and candy to hand out, so, um, you know, wear your swag, and then be there. Um, I'll be sending out more information about where and when, um, soon, I'm having a meeting with, uh, the planner tomorrow. Great, thank you.
And we'll have these, right?
September nineteenth.
Hopefully, I don't know about the, um, process.
Okay. I'm excited.
So that's, again, September nineteenth, and?
And, and the parade starts at six.
That's, where do, do we have to be at lineup at what time?
I will let you know.
Okay, and we've, we've always had really great turnout from our commission, so we hope everybody from the commission can be there. I'll just double-check and make sure I got that on my calendar.
I'll see if I can make the long walk.
Yeah.
Oh, my God.
You can sit in the truck as well, if you'd like.
At first I was like, what?
Just, you can, oh, my gosh.
She walked from, she walked from her ta- house, her townhome, to City Hall, when it was like, five below zero outside.
Oh, my gosh.
For the interview for, for the commission. I'm like, you walked here? Um, okay, all right, so snowy trading cards, so these look awesome. I do, I am a little concerned about Kenny, I just, is that gonna cause great controversy in the city, like?
I think so.
Oh, my God.
Kenny, I know.
Kenny.
I just, I've never heard that before.
I'm pronounced to the commission, has a name, and it's Kenny, and I have been here since before the snowman, and I am shocked.
Yeah.
Completely shocked.
Yeah, I, I've just always known it as the Giant Snowman.
Exactly, the giant.
You know, i- is it something that we should take off and just label it as Giant Snowman, or?
I wonder where she heard that its name was Kenny.
Well, that's what we were told of, it was word of mouth.
Maybe somebody's played.
Somebody's vocal, yeah.
I'm gonna text Sue Springborn.
I mean, cause thank you.
Yes, there you go.
I, I feel like he even has a Wikipedia page.
I, I, look, if Sue Springborn says the name is Kenny, it's Kenny.
Agreed.
But if she has no idea who Kenny is.
Yeah.
Well, has anybody read the actual plaque? Like, does it say on there what?
I don't think it does.
No.
I don't think he has a name.
Okay.
No, yes.
But I'm glad we added this in.
I don't recall it being Kenny.
I remember that.
But otherwise, these are fantastic, and so we will have these for the parade, do you think, Ma?
Yes, we should get them in time. I've talked to the vendor about it. If everyone's okay with it, I'll go ahead and order. The only thing that he was kind of concerned about was the holographic card, um, he said he can print it out on a metallic base, but if not, if that's, that's not what we're looking for, he can recommend a vendor, but he'll look into finding one as soon as possible for us.
So wouldn't be necessarily like shifty, but it would be shiny, cause holographic, they kinda change as they, you shift it around, right?
Yes, so he, he said it wouldn't quite be holographic, but it'll be on a metallic.
Yeah.
Like, base.
So, the way I'm reading that would be, um, the green card here is the one we were doing holographic, right?
No, it's, it's Kenny.
Sorry.
Yes, cause he's the original.
Yes, so.
I'm not used to it.
We, um, yeah, sorry, I was.
The border is what I'm thinking would be the only part that would be metallic, and the image itself would be.
So, the last meeting that we had, it wa- we kind of talked a little bit about it, it was an idea that was put out there, and then Raquel had pointed that out, and I'm like, oh, yeah, we did kinda talk about maybe the main snowman could be.
Yeah.
You know, the special ones.
Yeah.
He's the original.
He's the original.
Yeah, you couldn't have it be one of the others.
If this is something that you still want, we can proceed with it, if not, we can go back to the one that I initially emailed about as well, too.
No, I like this, um, yeah, go with the metallic.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it'll still be like a pop of something.
I love it.
It'll still be good.
I think the most important thing is to have all the cards available for the kids.
Okay.
Oh, and we're still gonna have candy, too, though, right?
I'm sorry.
Absolutely.
Oh, yes, definitely candy, too.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Are you worried?
Are we?
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, the request, cause the council didn't make it through with.
Oh, yeah, yeah. You can't be going down that, and not have ca-.
I know.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so we asked for more this year.
Thank you.
Good.
Yeah, we made sure to let Ava know, too, like, um, please order more.
We heard last year wasn't enough.
Are we, I have a question, are we going to make any attempt to try to distribute those pencils? I feel like that box in the art cart would just collect us to.
The, we can, uh, we handed some out at, I think at the parade last year, too.
Yeah, we did.
We did at the festival, right?
Yeah, so, yeah, they're kind of available to hand out whenever.
Yeah, and I've been trying to encourage kids to take them when the art cart is out, but, I mean, a lot of the kids are, you know, they've come by already, and they're like, oh, I have one, I'm like, okay, well, I'll take another if you want. But I think we could toss those out, too.
Yeah.
So, we could just pull it out of the cart.
Okay, anything else we need for that, then? Feeling good for the parade? So, I'm sure we'll probably have to show up by around five o'clock, probably, right? Okay, subcommittee updates, Fall Festival or Autumn Arts Festival?
So with the Autumn Arts Festival, we met online, um, were, so the idea was that we meet, like, each week, and then the week be, just the day or two before, we meet another time on teams, so that we can talk about, um, all the little details that needs to be finalized in place, um, so every person has a role that they're playing, um, I'm the vendor coordinator, uh, for the food, and also the volunteer coordinator, and then Ava is, um, she'll be, she's in charge of the event, but, uh, we, the last time that we spoke, we had mentioned that. we had mentioned that Ava wanted to be the emcee because, you know, we weren't sure if you would be available. But Chris had stepped up, so we included her. Ava reached out to Chris.
Yep.
And Chris can take on the role as the, you know, performer, presenter, or the emcee for the event. So that's wonderful news. That way Ava can kind of, you know, take videos, take pictures, do whatever she needs to run around for the event. And then we have Carrie that would be coordinating the craft vendors.
Oh, yeah.
Uh huh. Well, she's in charge of that. Mm-hmm. And then Amanda worked on creating a map for all of us. She won't be there, but her wonderful map should be very helpful. And then we have Sharon and C that have volunteered to be at the event, too.
And Raquel.
Raquel will be there in the morning time. Oh, and you're available, too? Perfect.
Yay.
Yay.
I'm available now, too.
Oh, Lisa's available, too?
Oh, we got, it's more, more volunteers than we've ever had.
Yeah. Yay, we got this.
Lucky us.
So let me know your availability so that I can put you into the schedule of who's gonna be doing what. The community craft, you know, at the last meeting, it was suggested that maybe someone from our commission lead it. So if Sharon, if you're available to lead it, if you like, or
Could you remind me, I know we had that Teams meeting.
Yes.
I totally forgot what I signed up for. So could you remind me what you put me on there for?
Yeah, so since you're only available during the morning time portion of it, up until one or two, you can work on helping set up and then the art cart.
Okay.
And the community craft starts later into the afternoon, around one, until the supplies are depleted. That's what we agreed on. So me, I was thinking maybe Sharon could lead that, or if C would be available to lead that.
And by lead it, she doesn't mean that you have to
Yeah.
No, I will be sitting there while they are doing their thing. Really?
Yes, you'd be there just guiding and, you know, helping out, or stationed there.
Okay.
Yeah.
What is the craft this year?
The community craft is, everyone will get a small canvas, maybe three by three inches, and they can paint whatever they would like on there. And then we have three large wooden canvases that I will then assemble all the small ones, too, and will be displayed in City Hall somewhere.
Cool. Yeah, that'd be great.
So they have to give up their artwork?
They do.
Yeah.
But the art cart will also be available, and they can take that home.
Do we have an event for the art cart?
One.
What's that? Is there an event, an art event for the art cart, or just?
The art cart does have a stamp activity. I'm a little nervous about our supplies on that. And if we run out, there are many, many other crafts.
Lots of stuff you could do. There's lots of stuff in there now.
Okay, so on the tiny canvas, is that, anybody can do that?
Yes.
Okay, so it's anyone. Oh, this is gonna be great.
We have about three hundred? No. I think we only have like a hundred.
Really? I thought it was more than that.
Okay. We can order more if you'd like.
Well, let's just get these hundred tiny canvases created and assemble them into a big artwork. Who's, who's assembling these?
I will.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, afterwards. Do you want to order more?
Let's order more.
Let's do it.
If we end up with more than I can fit on the wooden canvases, then after the event, we could still purchase more wooden canvases, or I can choose which ones that aren't appropriate maybe to go on the canvas, if that happens.
Yeah.
It happened with the snowmen. Well, there were like coloring sheets that we had at the Arts Festival last year of snowmen. And then they were displayed downstairs for a little bit, and there were a couple of them that were not appropriate.
They had genitals and things like that, or?
No, there, I remember seeing some that were more murder-like.
Oh.
So this event starts at eleven? Starts at eleven, so
But from eleven to one.
The community craft is from one to five.
Okay, so hopefully somebody will show me.
Ava or Mai, I think are your main touchpoints.
Me and Amanda actually went to the art cart, and she showed me exactly what supplies were used for the event, so.
Okay, this is gonna be fun.
And could you send that calendar or the schedule that you and Ava created for the event to everybody on the commission? Because Ava and Mai and Sarah have done an amazing job organizing all of the ideas and past events. And it's, I'm really excited about it, so it'd be good to share that.
And how early would you want us there for setup?
So if you're able to come to the morning portion of it, eight o'clock is what our staff members have decided. But, you know, eight thirty or so for you guys.
So you've told like vendors they can start setting up at eight o'clock, right?
No, we're telling vendors nine o'clock, but for staff, it's between eight to eight thirty. That way we would have a little bit of time to kind of debrief and then, you know, start preparing for vendors to arrive. But, you know, what we tell them isn't always something that they'll always do, so they might show up early. That's why staff member, we were like, okay, let's just be there at eight o'clock, just in case.
Which I did want to update you guys. I actually can't be there till like twelve thirty now.
Oh, okay.
I have another booking. I have a scholarship obligation that I have to be at before that. Yeah.
And then how long can you stay?
Well, I'll probably just be there. I'll probably push it all back, so
Okay.
if I said three, four hours before, then just whatever, whatever, three, four hours.
Question for you, Mai. Last year, in the seating area to watch the performers, I brought about a couple dozen chairs myself, just so that we could have a seating area set up and people knew that they could go and sit there, because there's, we just kind of had this expectation that people would bring their own chairs, which they don't. Some people do, but and then we, at some point, took, brought out more chairs from inside the park building. Will we have any chairs that could be set up in that area out there? What is gonna be happening in the park building during the event this year?
We're planning to use the chairs that's located within the building. I believe we have seating for ninety-five people. Would that be enough?
Oh, more than enough, too many, yeah. Yeah, so I don't think you'd
And they're gonna be under that tent that
Oh, fantastic. Okay, so because, is it, are they still doing bingo this year?
Yeah.
Okay, so
Maybe like a couple out there and then leave a couple inside the building.
Yeah, I think it would be nice to at least have, you know, a couple dozen chairs set up out in front of the performance area so people know that they can go and sit there and
Tom, some things you'll be excited for as far as the performers this year. We have, they're gonna have some new tents set up for performer staging area.
Yeah, that's awesome.
So the changing space. And then behind the performers, that big glass wall, Ava's getting some pipe and drape there, so it can be covered. And then on the inside is gonna be kind of a little photo station
Oh.
for selfies and
Oh, cool. Excellent.
Really cute prom to go along with it, with the North St. Paul's Autumn Arts Festival.
Yeah.
I think you'll love it.
I love walking down the street and seeing the signs. It's, it's getting me real excited. Yeah.
Good.
And we did get new signs ordered, too.
Good. Excellent.
Like us there at eight thirty?
Yes, between eight to eight thirty.
Okay. Are you still needing volunteers, too?
Yes. The more you're here, I've reached out to the person that's the park commission. She deals with the sixty-two students, or she knows someone from there. And I provided her all the information and the link to apply to become a volunteer. I haven't received anything back yet, so I'm not sure if it's because school just started and maybe they just haven't had the time to disperse the information yet.
If someone doesn't fill out the form, will you still allow them to volunteer?
Well, because we're dealing with minors, it's really important that they or their parents sign it as, you know
Are you able to have the forms available that day?
I'm sorry?
Can we have forms available that day?
Most definitely, yes.
Oh, good. That would be great.
Because we know that someone will just show up and
Okay.
Good. That sounds great.
And we want to be prepared as much as possible.
Yeah.
I don't seniors at North High have to do volunteer hours? This would be like, this would be fun volunteer hours.
We had a lot last year.
A lot last year. And I think it's, this year, we're about a week earlier than we did last year. And so that's maybe part of it. It's just coming up a lot sooner when school started and getting all that organized.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I expect everything will go very smoothly. It's gonna be great. And, you know, the volunteers, you know, I think it was kind of pretty low pressure for volunteers the last couple of years. You know, a lot of hanging out. So, yeah, it'll be great. But thanks for all that you're doing. I appreciate it. Project Snowy, so we have no update on that, right? We're done with that one?
But I wanted to update the I don't know if you've noticed, when you're looking at the nose.
Yes, I noticed the nose is back.
Yes, so it's not back, back, but we got ahold of Gino.
Yeah.
And I was asking him about repairing it or what could be done to fix it, and he was so very kind. I, I offered, you know, payment, but he said no. He could just take care of it. And it's so funny, because he said, I'll be there in the afternoon, and then when I got back from lunch, it was repaired. It was painted on. I was like, oh wow, that was quick.
He just painted it, painted it on. Yeah, great.
All right, everyone give him a follow on social media and write something nice about him.
Yes.
Oh, he's, he's a super nice guy. Yeah, real sweet guy. Okay, anything else, huh, Snowy?
No, that's it.
Okay, just we gotta figure out if it's Kenny or not for the big, big one.
I have an update. She didn't know, but she has also heard that it was called Kenny.
Oh.
So
Maybe they haven't even, huh?
I don't know.
Where have we been?
If you don't know, the
Were we not paying attention?
Maybe you guys weren't in on the in-crow.
I definitely was not on the in-crow. That's not a question.
Not the Kenny crowd.
Like, if we had an authoritative Kenny from Sue Springborn, then I'd be like, okay. But she's kind of like
She's like, yeah, I heard that, too.
Because then I think it's too much of a risk that we are then officially naming it.
I know. I don't want to be there.
Yeah.
Isn't he called the Giant Snowman on Wikipedia?
Can we just, can we just call him Giant Snowy? I mean, for sake of a short name and fitting it on the card.
Get rid of Kenny.
Snowy the Giant? I don't know.
Always called the Giant Snowman. That's it.
Yeah.
The Giant Snowman. I think it'll fit.
So put that then?
If anybody complains, they can make their own card.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I like that. That's a good
But, yeah, I
I just feel weird about calling him Kenny.
Oh, I do, too, because then I, then it seems like the city is officially saying that that's what the name is, and then people
The name after a man?
By the mirror, if his name was Kenny. You know, just something fun for people to see a proclamation.
I, then, yeah, I think we'd have to have a city event, like Name the Giant Snowman.
Right.
What is the name of it?
And if everybody votes for Kenny, then great.
Yeah, I don't remember seeing that in the, the review, the
At night down at one of the little bars.
Okay, so utility box wraps. I think C had something mentioned.
She did, and I followed up on that, too. It's already peeling.
Oh, the one at North? Yeah, that's not good.
It hasn't been a full month, and when C told us about that, I went out right away to take a look. Yeah, it's not in a great shape. I emailed the vendor.
Okay.
So hopefully they will follow up on that and maybe
They must have some kind of guarantee, don't they?
Something in our contract.
Yeah.
Other vendors?
I was gonna say, do they come from different vendors for the different boxes?
No, I, I hear that it's the same vendor, so something must have, something wonky must have happened.
There's been some oil on it or something.
Hopefully they're able to fix it, yeah.
Yeah. The other ones, like you said, they're all fine.
Yeah.
Mural project.
Wait, I have, I'm sorry, I have an update for the utility box.
Oh, you do? Okay, sorry.
So I'm working with Scott at FTC Graphics, the utility box wrap people, for final heart hands submission, using their free file sharing WeTransfer due to the large file size. So I'm working on getting that to him and then, yeah.
Did you design the mosaic, then, or are they gonna do that?
So I've designed one, I have two options, actually, but I'm sending it, the files to them, because I don't want to pay them for their art time if we don't have to pay them for their art time. So I want to see if it's adequate, and if not, then I'll send them individual heart.
Okay.
This is the heart hands. And where are we gonna put that one?
So that's at Casey Lake, across from Casey Lake Park, the larger box, the transformer.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's my update on that one. And I think you had one on the veterans.
Park wrap. Yeah, I did talk to the Veterans Park Committee to see what they had to say about allowing a wrap in the park, because it's considered a sacred space, even though it's a North St. Paul Park. And they were very positive about it and very excited about having it. And they would like to have it done by the ten-year anniversary, which is August sixteen, twenty twenty-five.
Oh.
That gives us time. They said they were open to the idea of stock images, but then they were also open to a high school competition type of concept. They said they would like something patriotic. They don't want the branches of the military on there, and they don't want any images or artillery of war, nothing violent or anything like that. They like the idea of stars and stripes and eagles. And all they ask is, could they please see the design before it goes on the box so that they could approve it, meaning to make sure it's not something that's offensive to the military or veterans, because, you know, I don't think Ava's served, I don't know. I don't want to jump in and say. So we wouldn't know what necessarily is going to be offensive that they would not like to see in the park.
Sounds reasonable.
Yeah, totally.
Just to clarify, is it the utility box there, or is there a rock that?
It's a utility box wraps. There's, there's like three, there's multiple utility boxes, and they would like something for when people come there to, if, for it to be, I don't know, this kind of like relaxing or serene for family members of particularly fallen military members and military members who go there and have lost their comrades, something that would be relaxing.
Is there a symbolic flower to, like, bets or something?
That's a good idea. Poppies.
Poppies.
That's what I was thinking.
That's World War One, from the UK is where that came from. But they, they, like I said, they were, they thought stars and stripes did not have to be, what would you call that? Abstract. It could be, you know, abstract. Didn't have to be literal. This is the flag, this is this. But the big thing is serenity, patriotic, serene is their emphasis. But they were very open to collaboration and
Great.
not heavy-handed about it, so I thought that was fantastic.
Yeah, it's great.
Thanks for doing that, Sharon.
Yeah.
Mural project. We got nothing.
I, yeah, we're struggling to find a spot.
Right, yeah.
Have you thought about street murals? Oh, sorry.
That was a thought that I, I had that I had not presented, but go ahead.
That, that was all I had. Have you thought about street murals?
No.
The city manager said the dumpster garage, I think on Sepulveda, would be available.
So
Is that the
Is that the, sorry, the little garage that's in the parking lot?
I actually don't know.
Because I was driving all around, and I'm like, what is the dumpster garage? So there is, you know, so there's the public parking lot there, and there's a little garage that's pretty plain. And I'm like, is that it?
Must be.
So
Sounds like it needs paint.
They could do something, yeah, so
On Sepulveda, you said?
Mm-hmm.
I believe so.
Isn't that where they used to accept the food shelf donations when they were right there? When you would drop off your food shelf stuff in that little garage area? Maybe I'm just making that up, I don't know.
I, I don't know.
That's fine.
So, yeah, if we could just clarify what that thing is, I mean, we could paint it. More along the lines of what we did with like the bathroom building, probably, you know, paint three sides of it or something.
Yeah, and, and I'll say at least like
Yeah, and and I'll say at least like from a long term standpoint, that the downtown design manual or like the redevelopment master plan for the downtown includes like a pedestrian way on Sepulveda. Whether that will happen or not, you know, will vary, but that is the intention. Built within that plan.
But I don't think it's necessarily a bad thing to have these little garages and bathrooms throughout the community with murals. It introduces everybody to the concept of murals. And then maybe after enough bathrooms and garages to get painted with murals, somebody would want one on the side of a building.
It's a little pocket of color. Yeah, so, yeah. If that's, if we can confirm with Brian if that's what the, what the garage is. Okay, uh, paint night. Look at that.
So Jeremy said my ladder or my dock looks like a ladder. I disagree. I think it's a beautiful dock. But you know, if you wanna get berated for your art in a funny joking way and have a really good time, you should come to our guided art nights. It's very exciting. So looking forward to twenty twenty five.
So was that, uh, was everybody doing a similar scene for that one?
Oh, my God. And this, oh, my God, the sweetest lady. I don't, I, did we grab her name, Sharon?
Alina.
Wow, we we got, we got so different. Um, no, the lady that showed up though, didn't register. Sharon, oh, my God. Not a different Sharon. Sorry, Sharon. Um, oh, she she was like, well, my husband was just gonna stay inside and watch CNN all night. So I thought I'd just come over here. I didn't register. And I'm like, okay, well, as long as the artist is okay with you coming. So she's like, he was like, yeah, that's fine. So she was hilarious. She was just like, oh, my God, I don't know what this is, but it isn't a tree, you know. And so I was like, Sharon, and she kept running out of white paint. So I'm like, Sharon, stop eating the white paint, you know. We had such a great time. Everyone was giggling and laughing. And we didn't have wine, so. No, we did not have any sips. It was just La Croix all around. Crazy.
Didn't wanna leave, but.
I know.
Had open house.
Yeah, my head.
It was so fun. His, Jeremy's class is so upbeat, is so fun and energetic. I loved it.
We got lucky with these paint nights, so.
Great, bring them back.
I was happy.
Okay, Raquel, you wanna talk about the art cart?
Um, last event was something. We thankfully used up all of the plaster. I forget what you call them. The plaster mosaic things. Um, it was a good turnout.
A lot of kids.
I will say I'm not for doing it again. Only because it took so long and a lot of the kids were very impatient. We also had, um, some very confused parents who thought that we premixed it for them and they were just gonna come and do it and put their little stuff on it. So that was kind of a small hurdle, but it was really fun, though. It was just very time consuming and I think the kids were.
Most of the kids were carrying out wet plaster things that were still kinda goopy. And it was like, well, I'll finish it at home in an hour. But it was okay.
They did love it, though. And it it got a lot of a tr- a lot of attention. So I think that's why we.
It counted at one point, but I I think it was about two dozen kids.
There was at least six, twenty kids.
So it's good. Okay.
Sorry, Tom. I I have a question. So while going through the art cart with Amanda, we discovered some beautifully painted canvases in there that was from, was it a year or two ago? Do you remember?
Uh, it was last year. It was last year. There, the canvases, if anybody has seen them in our cart, that are split into four sections. And there's a little painting kind of in each section. They were displayed in City Hall last year.
My question is, um, instead of storing there, I I feel like it, we could place it somewhere to display or how would you like to have it displayed? Or what would you like to do with them? That's the question.
So I don't wanna feel like we have to be beholden to displaying these things even at all. I I would recommend too that you could just paint over them with white paint and you have new canvases for somebody else to paint on. I don't think that's terrible. Unless somebody wants them. I mean, like, I got, I got two artist kids at home and like my house is filling with, I got canvases and pottery all over the place.
You're not doing a paint night every month. God.
Uh, there's gonna be a million of these things. But you know, sometimes they just, like my daughter, they just, you know, just paint over something and do something else.
I feel like it's so, it's wasteful if we just store it in there and we don't do anything with it. Maybe we could do a online posting and say it's free for whatever runs, for which whatever resident that would like them, they can come pick it up at City Hall.
Or I was gonna say, if we somehow got like a, a poll out there to have whoever the original artist was come take the, take it back.
The one issue with that is because it was in four quadrants. I think different kids painted.
And I I don't know what this activity was. So was it a shared activity?
Kind of. Um, so like, different kids would have, four different kids could have painted on one campus.
Got it, got it. Okay, well, never mind that.
I like that idea of getting it out there. I wonder if, you know, in her connections, I'm sorry to put more work on Ava, but if we could ask her opinion, if there are any businesses that maybe would like to display it and we could like make a little sign, like a little artist plaque about, you know, hey, donated from the arts and cul- yes, that's it. Uh, donated from the Arts and Culture Commission, created twenty twenty three or whatever. I don't know, just something, you know, kind of promote the the commission and get art out there.
Ask Ava to do a call for.
I was just like the new donut place that opened. Wouldn't it be nice to just like gift them? But then like sometimes you don't wanna gift art, cause it's kinda subjective. Okay, all right. Well, maybe we just paint over them then.
In the future, we could renovate that community center and then have a space to display our art projects.
I would like to, before they are painted over or whatever we do with them, possibly scan or photograph a couple of the images to use in promos for future.
I got them all in here.
Yay, great.
Some of them are phenomenal and I love that.
Well, you should hang them up.
City Hall has a couple of places that, you know, could use some artwork.
Yeah.
Go for it.
It's kinda bland around here.
City manager to see if it's okay. Or if not, I could just decorate my cubicle with.
That or even what about even inside some of the park buildings?
Well, they get rented for events. If I showed up for a baby shower and.
You gotta hang your sprinkles over. Yeah, I hear you. In here would be nice, though, and we could say like, don't forget, we have an Arts and Culture Commission.
You'll never forget about us.
Okay, some options there for you.
Just let me know. Just looking for directions. Let me know and then I will look into it and see what I can do for you.
If there's an option to display them somewhere, great. If there's no options, I think we can just reuse them as resources. Canvases.
Canvases pile up very quickly.
Okay, reports from staff, twenty twenty four budget updates.
All right, so we paid our box wrap vendor in August, and that was the only spending that we had. That leaves our budget to five thousand five hundred for the utility box wrap. So I do have a quick question for you, Laura. Do you have a projected date of when your hand heart shaped box would be?
He didn't tell me a install date, but I can ask Scott tomorrow. Um, I had not done the weed transfer thing before, so that's new to me. Um, but yeah, I'll find out tomorrow and I can update you.
Yeah, let me know because I will have to let our electrical department know as well. That way they don't get shocked or they could at least be there to witness.
Oh, sure.
Shocked as in like surprised.
I really went the other way with that.
I don't, I don't want them to be surprised.
Sorry. Turn off the power.
That's all.
Oh, that's it for budget updates?
That's it for budget updates.
We're gonna have the cards pretty soon, right?
Oh, and I lied, um, so Sweather, we added her in for November the fifteenth because she was, you know, so popular. It, and the amount that, um, the amount that I updated for November was, um, it's a little bit different for all of her other events because she did men- mention about the price of canvas. It went up. And so, um, that's why there's a little bit of a price difference from her other events that she's charging.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, I like having these ones that are like in the winter.
Hey, you can come inside.
Yeah, cause you know, there's no, otherwise, a lot of times there's nothing else to do. In the summer, there's too much to do.
Yeah, that's it for me. Nothing else.
Okay, thanks. My, uh, reports from commissioners. Sharon, you got anything?
No, I do not.
Carrie?
Nope.
Amanda?
Uh, just on a personal update, life is hitting my family hard. And if I am short or take a long time to respond in emails or things like that, I'm working on it.
Do we need to get a meal train going for you?
No.
Well, I hope everything is okay, works out okay.
It it, it's fine, just a lot of balls in the court kind of thing.
Gotcha. Um, Raquel?
Uh, nothing here.
Laura?
My parents are gonna be leaving Memphis, Tennessee and moving to Minnesota.
Oh, really?
I'm very excited. They're, they haven't sold their house yet, but they found a house in Woodbury, so they'll be close. They looked for North St. Paul first. But at least they'll be close. They just don't have a timeline, but it's very exciting that. Family in the state.
Grandma, grandpa? Great.
Nice.
That's fun. And happy birthday last month. Um, and I have no updates myself. Um, reports from council liaison, Lisa.
Yes, um, so last time we talked a little bit about sidewalk poetry for twenty twenty five. And I did talk to Public Works, um, on what, kind of showed them what the options that have been done, um, mostly the, is it like lasered in or something like that? But, um, as long as it doesn't really, you know, in- impact the maintenance of it, they're, they're fine with it. So if we can find a way to ensure that or, you know, ask maybe St. Paul if, um, you know, how long their lasts or something like.
Oh, so they do some where they just kinda etch it in after.
I'm not sure how it works, but they, they think that's how it will work, just with how concrete works, so.
I just, I thought that it's like you gotta do it when the concrete's wet.
I think they said it was more like, do you know?
No, I don't know. I I guess I had a question. There wasn't an expectation that the poetry would be maintained. Isn't it kind of a transient?
The, the, um, the sidewalk panel itself. The infrastructure seasonal.
Okay, okay. I thought they were worried about we would want to have it continue to say the same thing forever and ever and ever.
That's what I thought these were.
We were talking, I think, about a couple of different options. And one of them was the stamped into the concrete or however they would do it. The other one is the rain activated.
Yeah, I was thinking.
And that one, uh, isn't permanent. It lasts for a few months or something like that.
I guess my concern with, uh, where it's like ac- actually stamped in there, then what happens when the street or the sidewalk, they have to dig it up and then it gets messed up and then is that gonna be an issue?
Um, we, we have our capital improvement plans and we have m- maps for, for days on where our sidewalks are going to be in. So we can choose a location that's a little bit more, um, you know, like say, at the eleventh street, they're actually not gonna be able to do it this year. There was an issue with, uh, an easement. But they'll be doing it in twenty twenty five, so that might be an opportunity they're gonna do of, uh, to add those sidewalks there. So we'll know that that'll be there for a long, long time, at least probably fifty years.
Yeah, cool.
It's budget season. Um, and so, uh, right now, we had discussed, um, so we're looking at about nine point eight eight percent. Um, we're about the middle of the road when it comes to other cities, um, in Ramsey County. I think like White Bear is the highest at like seventeen, eighteen percent. Um, I think last year they were like twenty as well. So they're much higher. Um, I think St. Paul falls a little bit under us. They have more commercial. That's part of the challenge with North St. Paul is we don't have as much, um, commercial. Um, so we don't gain as much taxes in that regard. And so a lot of it gets put on the residents, but um, so we're being very conscientious about it not, probably won't be going beyond nine point eight eight percent. I think the council agreed that that's kind of where we'll sit at. Um, and so we'll certify that at the next meeting, which means that's what you'll see on your, um, your, uh, tax Ramsey County tax sheet that they send you. And, um, that doesn't necessarily mean that's what's gonna happen, though. Um, it could be less than that, but we can't go above that. So just know that that number could fluctuate some. So some of the things that are being looked at in terms of um, how to manage that percentage, um, one is, uh, we won't be, well, uh, we probably won't be, um, increasing, uh, or implementing a levy for HRA. We're actually gonna reduce it. Um, and then they're considering maybe reducing a levy for the streets. Again, we're all still in conversation. Um, and then switching over, um, one of the studies to the EDA fund. Um, if they accept that. And then looking at, um, in, uh, the capital improvement plan and, um, one percent of the parks and adding one percent of the parks and one percent for buildings. So, um, we're not sure where we're gonna land yet. Um, but, um, I think we have a goal of eight percent, but there will be trade offs, um, with some of those items. But I would say overall, um, part of the challenge, I'd say, is because we're in negotiations with our unions, um, and we have six unions. And so, um, we just heard the numbers after the meeting, um, in a closed session. And so we can't really disclose that yet, but that's something that we also have to pay a lot of attention to is, um, is the, the changes and what that impact looks like. Not just over one year, but over the, the three year contract. So we are kind of considering, um, making space for that. But I will take any questions on the budget and otherwise, um, there's a lot of construction going on and we're looking at, um, doing some more in twenty twenty five and I think, yeah, we'll finally get to Gerald Street, which is probably the worst street. North St. Paul, if you don't ride your bike on it. But, um, let's see, uh, I think that's pretty much what I have for the budget. Um, all the department heads have um, presented their, um, asks if they had any. Um, and I'd say most didn't or minimal. It's just, uh, we really need to be mindful of our personnel costs, um, which make up the largest part of, of our city's budget. And I think that's it.
Do you know the names of the candidates running for council?
Yes, so, um, there will be three candidates, um, that have, um, registered. Um, Troy Woods is one of them. Um, the other is I can't remember right now. Caesar. What's Caesar's last name? It starts with an R. I can look it up, but, um, and then, uh, can't remember last name, but Dave, Dave or David or something like that. Um, I don't know any of them personally. Um, I am not on there. Um, and I hope, I think maybe Troy was at our meeting last night. I'm not sure. I don't know, I don't know who he is, but there were a couple of people in the audience, but um, yeah, I don't know. I hope that there may be a forum or something. I hope that there may be a forum or something, um, typically the Legion will take that on. But I'm not sure, that's just something they do voluntarily.
It'd be great if the Legion did the, went a little bit further with that forum and asked questions and things.
Yeah, that would be nice.
But it's at the, at least having a little bit that they have is helpful. Is it?
Yeah, pretty much.
Lisa, appreciate it, alright, if there's nothing else that anyone would like to add, we'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Carrie. Second by Raquel, all those in favor say aye. Opposed and we are adjourned at eight nineteen PM.